Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you that opportunity, Lord, to serve the people of this county. We thank you, Lord, for our guest today, Lord, what the flowers pledge in this serving this wonderful county, Lord. We pray, Lord, that we might seek your guidance in all that we do for the better of this county. We pray, Lord, those in our county that breathe, those who receive, pray that they might seek your guidance, your support, Lord, in all things that they do. We give a worship, Lord, and you bless us with thy holy precious name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is it called meeting or? I need a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
All in favor? Need a motion to approve the meetings.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Mr. Davis?
Your turn.
Yeah, your turn.
All right. Good to be with you all. I have a few blocks of information to look over, so I won't talk too much about that. It's all fairly self-explanatory. We appreciate your support of C-3. We're entering our fifth year. That's great leadership that you have appointed and, of course, on our board, we have three from each county. The mayor's, member mayors, appointed member of the commission. But we've got several of our board members here this morning. Our name, why don't I hit a blank? I want to address some of them. We've got the mayors and the mayors.
Mayors, members, and commissioners.
Yeah, our chairman this year is David Logan. And David's following Wayne Christian, who is from Lamont County. That was our, you know, our past chairman. Don Bussey was the chairman a year prior. And, of course, you've appointed Adele Preles. Adele replaced Gerald Tegrel, both, correct me, as been very dedicated members of our board. I really appreciate it. Appreciate it. We've, and then we have Steve Foshee, who's appointed by the member mayors. And Steve has been on our board as ex-fiscal member for quite a while, same as Dale moved up from ex-fiscal. So, all the way that we were able to get some longevity and experience on the board was to have ex-fiscal members that move up. Because it is just a single term that you can serve as a member and you have to go off for a term. And then the third member is Susan Bura. Susan, of course, has been away from the area for a while. Philip Herod, who's the vice chairman of the CDF, and that's our other board member. CDF. And we've, so we have Philip Herod, who's the vice chair of CDF. And he's our non-voting member. Paula Reed, who's from up here at G.I.S. And then we have one other, Matt Sheehan. Matt, of course, Matt put you appointed. That's just across the street. Been a great, great ex-fiscal. We've had the best year yet in the past year, and it's been a result of, of course, a lot of hard work. All of us do to try to make this county and our other counties' communities successful and desirable. You know, to attract industry, you have to be attractive in a lot of ways, in ways that these companies each have their own set of, their own situation, a set of location requirements. So, it's our job, and we talk about what we do in that handout that you have there, but it's our job to find those folks that match up with what we have to offer, convince them that this is the best place among all places they could go. And we are in a global competition, so that it's not just our neighbors. It's not just, you know, throughout the state where the companies go, but throughout the world where they may go and choose to locate. So, we do work in trying to attract new businesses. And yet, that's not the majority of the jobs that come into any area in a certain timeframe. The majority of jobs that accompany companies are already here. So, we're proud that even though we've had some new businesses that moved in. In Marion County, in last year's 1,153 jobs that were created, Marion County had 55% of those jobs, more so than Lamar and Fay put together. You had three new industries. You had the Sterling RV, which is in Winfield. You've also had that Rustic River Homes, which is essentially now a new business with new investors. That's there in the Kobe building here in Hamilton. And then you've had some large expansion. The largest expansion was Scytel, which was 300 jobs here in Hamilton. So, some of those are listed on the timeframe that you see, and then, of course, we talk about those in the newsletter. Some here we can add. The newsletter would go out at least every other month. If we don't have your emails, we'll send them to you at your home. And, of course, we're always available and able to speak with you by phone, by cell phone. The cell phone I have with me all the time, I'll leave you a card if you want to have that cell number, but please call me. Just if something comes up, you say, "Well, what's going on over there?" But fortunately, there have been a lot of things going on in this area. We've had 25 million invested last year. Majority of that, 3M, $10 million in their capital investment. And, of course, as I said, most of the jobs come from companies that are here. Most of the investments are going to come from companies here because they like this environment they're going to grow here. And so, that's the, really the testimony that we also use when we're selling our area to new companies, if the companies that are here are happy to be here. We've had startup businesses that come through our affiliation with University of Alabama. It's the Crosswind Neuro Research Network, where the office for Marion County. We have a seminar tomorrow night at the New Tom Bigby Electric Office for entrepreneurs. And so, we're going to have about 20 people that will be there for that session. And just trying then to cover all three bases. You're going to create jobs by starting businesses, expanding businesses, and new businesses. Most of that information is in your packet. Great thing about this coming year, the interstate, I hope, will open by the arrive. Of course, you know, we've been waiting for a long time. That development on the interstate will happen. It's not a matter of if, but when. I think that you'll see restaurants and hotels and even industry along the interstate, because that is something that not a lot of folks have. So, again, we're setting ourselves apart from the competition by having high interstate exits. And we've had three advantage sites on that exit. One is here in Hamilton, one in U.N., and one in Winfield. Advantage site just means that the state has certified that the site is being shovelled. Already all the utilities are there. And so, once that is explained to folks, and they like the fact that there's no risk, there's no environmental, there's no, so more tests have been done, so that they know that it can handle a building, a large construction project. And also, of course, the utilities are there, which are a company answer. So, we look forward to coming here, look forward to working with you. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
We've been told that until the interstate 2022 is such on mouse, mouse. They're not, when will that be on mouse now? How often will they update?
It's sort of strange how that happened. You know, we were told that you could not even designate an interstate until it was connected to another interstate. Pressure by ALDO to say, "We've been trying to maintain an interstate that's federal highway", finally had the feds say, "Well, okay, we'll take it." We took down in Alabama our future home of I-22 signs. If you go to Mississippi, you'll still see those signs of future I-22. The, of course, it's all going to be settled this year when it opens August, Dec., and maybe October. And we have seen, and it does irritate us when we see even on the weatherman's map that it's still 78 in I-22. But a lot of those folks to catch on will certainly do so once there's, you know, the announcement that the thing's open.
The worst one was the completion area in Birmingham.
Yeah, so, yeah, very close and long awaited. We have a group called I-22 Alliance that is the Franklin County Industrial Association, the Winston County, and also Walker County that work with our three counties to promote the fact that that's coming. We'll host a dinner for some consultants in just a couple of weeks. We've done that in Birmingham and Atlanta. And we're going to have also a familiarization kind of tour to bring people in from the state. Our allies, our company, of course, TBA, which Franklin County certified part of that by TBA, Winston also, and the Department of Commerce folks coming to the state in the fall. So, we just want them to be able to come up to see us, see our sites, but also to take that loop there, which is going to be the most expensive construction project connecting roads between the history of the state. And so, we're planning for that with our I-22 Alliance and this dinner. We're also really active in automotive manufacturers association in Alabama. There's a meeting coming up in Montgomery next month that we'll host a booth. We always sponsor and host booths at Alabama Automotive Manufacturer Association. We have a part-time employee, Ron Davis, that's the president of the AAMA. And so, the connections there that we're trying to make with automotive, just know that we're well-suited for automotive. We have, to your packet there, nine of those original equipment manufacturers, OEMs, within 230 miles. And so, when companies, and they do, suppliers want to work with more than one, one of these OEMs, then they're going to want to be between them. And you just can't hardly find a better place between those than right here. Right here in Marion County. And the connection then that we'll have nonstop to go from Toyota to Honda, or even down south to some of those Hyundai's growing, Kia down in Georgia. But we'll, we'll see those again by a matter of if, but when. The Toyota plant, we talked about before, has not gotten to that critical mass yet to bring in a lot of suppliers. And the suppliers that they've brought in are tier ones, and they're close. They want them to be very close, some of them even on-site. The only automotive supplier that has come outside of that that serves Toyota, those are companies that also serve Honda. And so, they wanted to get up close to Birmingham, and they went into a spec building in Jasper. But none of those truly exclusively Toyota suppliers have moved outside of that immediate to lower area. Once they add another model, or they change the Corolla, to the point that there's new parts that have to be built outside of what are currently being built in other places, they're going to have reason to look for a location.
Do you have any prospects? I mean, not government anything, any secrets here? But are you getting contacts and prospects and things that are in the mill that you're working on?
We do. We've got a good variety of things that we're working on. And I go to trade shows. Again, most of these jobs, we do work with local companies to try to help them grow, and helping them with these, you know, it's a incentive, tax payments, or things that are available to them. Training, resources that are available. But there are, there are several from trade shows I've been to attracting new companies.
That's how you got the RV from Wind, the loop?
Yeah, I went back to that, it's in Louisville, Kentucky, in December. And then we've gone to a guns and ammunition show, which time is right right now in Alabama, just because the ring is new into the state. You also got Stire Arms down in Bessemer. There's an ammunition or accessories company in Anston. So, Alabama's really on that right now. It's just a great time to go to talk to those companies. Have one that's in California, for instance, that we're sending information to that are interested. They were looking up in the Nashville area. We know their money will go up further here. And it would be, again, a company that would move the families as well as the business. So, just a lot of things we've got to put in place for them to be convinced that this is the new place.
Do you all approve, like, service, I mean, service, I'd like to tell you, or things that don't make the product, but you know, that, when you all look at those?
Repetitive resource or information, if anyone is working on something specific, this commissioner, any communities would call us to say, tell us about these, answer these questions that are being asked. But, yeah, we can come alongside of them if it's not a competitive situation. We're always promoting the region because you've got more things that you can put in the basket to say, "This is, you know, this is the type of product that you're looking for." And we may have several, just rather than just one. The, so, we have ventured out in terms of, you know, restaurants, hotels, just because they're going to be calling, and are our great prospects, because of the interstate. We have a healthcare task force that we started last year. We're trying to make sure that the hospitals and the healthcare providers in our counties are as strong as they should be, and they're working together and filling some gaps. And we've now in the process of transitioning those into our other communities. We did a strategic plan back when we first started, which we had committees the same as the state. And so, we thought we could set those, the best of the volunteers in the healthcare task force into those other committees and make sure that those are given to the community. That's that Accelerate Alabama plan that you heard about from the governor. So, we do have, you know, a retention committee, a renewal committee, and a recruitment committee. You know, we're mainly going to be focused on industry prospects, but other things that come up are just because their, a mayor is needing some support and help in the drawing room.
Before that, what does the figure show as far as the economy? I know, are we still, are we in upper trend yet, or is it still?
You know, you're in the, you're in the top tier as far as employment among Alabama's counties. And so often, people who go to the coffee shop is, "We need jobs." Well, sure, we need jobs, but the fact is that we're a lot better off than we're worried. You can see by there's unemployment rate showing the decline there. Our full employment will be just something shortly less than that, because you would see now, it's quarter of what type of business you're in. People will say, "Oh, it's hard to find people." My argument for that would be that we still have a lot of people that travel out of their home counties to work. And so, often when companies are hiring, unless they're going to go online, which fortunately now you can go to the career center here at Hamilton-Dale campus and do it online, because our best people are away for the day and coming back, they may miss Allison. They seem to be hearing about some job opportunities. But we should continue to improve the cost of the minimum, and that's both in the national economy and locally, that we'll see continued improvement. And with that, we hope that that graph will continue to decline even at the end of next year to, to, to even a little bit. Together, three levels in unemployment in the state. When you see a map of the counties in Marion County and Bay of Lamar as well, are those that are less than 7%. They're like 7, 6.8 or so. It's like a point above the state average. You know, I think the economy's come back, and I think we're going to be in a good position. One thing that's happening now is the state of Alabama's approved, have approved through the House, some legislative legislation that will give additional incentives for rural areas. I think it's just going to be fantastic to have some things that the larger communities can offer.
Eric, explain that a little further, because I've heard things about that, but I would like to hear what your interpretation is.
Well, it may change. If it passed the House pretty much unscathed, as far as what the Department of Commerce had promoted. But what we're going to do, instead of the capital credit program that was just a return to companies on a percentage of the income tax that they were paying to the employees, they're going to be able to use that as cash ahead of the, well, it'll be a year ahead, but they'll be able to get 3% of their gross payroll back in cash. And they can get that after the first year in business. So, it's really that they're, instead of just reducing their taxes, the state will say, "Well, we'll just give you that money." And it's the same. It's going to be 3% for companies in larger communities, but it'll be 4% in the rural communities. And then if you hire vets and do some things that chronically unemployed, it could be 4.5%. The, let's see, the other things that they're going to do, that's really the best one for rural. But, well, others for research and development, and some of those things that the larger communities might not, or most likely use.
And how does that compare to other states in terms of helping rural?
Yeah, it will help us. We have, we have sort of lost our edge in terms of incentives when we had the, of course, it started and since it sort of entered everybody's frame of reference when Mercedes came over 20 years ago. But there's just been continuous been battle among states, especially in the South, that are aggressive to improve on their incentives each year. And Alabama's been five or six years without any changes. So, this will get us back up to that upper tier of competitive states.
I know if you enable things, because of the, I think, large deficit of, you know, fund lending. The governor was sort of talking, relatedly, talking about taxing outstate businesses and industries. If that were to come to fruition, that would be that earnestment of attracting outstate people.
And it's a point of argument, and they look at everything. There's, normally, these bigger companies have consultants that just sort of pull out those items that they can then negotiate down. And, yeah, you would think that that would be something that they would recognize, would be red flagged.
Would we, as a C-3, would we promote that, or would we sort of say, would that, we'd rather have them come in and keep their taxes low?
The clean way to do it is, yeah, just to keep it as it is. And these companies, you know, we're all talking, we're talking about new money. Those companies that come in, you're never going to lose anything. You're going to gain those jobs and all of the indirect benefits that those people have in payroll in the state. And so, when businesses is taxed at a higher rate, we're not as attractive. And then you're not going to see that the, you know, that growth. Anytime that you see an expansion, it's a decision, just like to locate somewhere. They've decided to locate again, or that they've already located. That expansion may then be hurt because they're saying, "Well, you know, they raised our taxes now." And again, most of our jobs are in companies that are already here. Yeah, we're going to stay after. We're going to support you in every way that we can. We had a great annual meeting this past, it was late January. And it just kicked off again, as I said, between that annual meeting and the annual meeting, we had new companies from each county. We had over 1,100 jobs in Marion County, definitely held their own, and having the largest of those job creators, Scytel 300. And then you had other companies, just for example, Kiff Enterprises buying the hardened manufacturing. So, now you'll see that those buildings are, well, they're all used or planned to be used. We were looking for space recently because we have many fewer buildings than we had before. 17 buildings that have been sold or occupied in this span of four years. So, the Kiff folks said, "Well, now, these aren't for sale or lease. We can use those." And they've hired a additional 159 people up that way. So, it's just a matter of moving forward. The companies that are here are happy, and then because they're happy, we can bring in others to say, "This is a good business environment." We know it is because the companies that are here are doing well. We'll see a lot more growth. All of these jobs, 1,100 plus, most of them ahead of us instead of behind us. So, those jobs are being created for people today and tomorrow, whether they come in and they announce their peak jobs, if that only takes two to three years to get to that peak. So, there'll be companies that are hiring, and I think that the, you know, the momentum success, to get success. And we'll see that the unemployment rate continue to decline. And it should be in pretty good shape. Appreciate an opportunity to work with you.
I?
Yes, sir.
I just got a couple of things real quick.
We opened the bids last week, and we could ask off, and I've reviewed the bids. And I've got a letter that recommended we award it to Lowe's Responsible Bitter Hump and Finding Company, Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
We need to make a motion.
We made a, we made a, we already made it?
I don't think we did. Kenny made the motion, I second. Next item of business, of course, I've talked with Mr. Bartison. You know, they're going to be closing US Highway 43 near the Pilewood Community. And they've got a slide there, and I've talked to Steve Davis. And they're kind of monitoring it, hope they kind of estimate one day this week. Don't really know when exactly when that's going to take place. We have some concerns about a lot of that truck traffic that may try to go around County Highway 45. What I understand, there's about 9,000 vehicles available on 43. Of course, they got detours marked, you know, and they sent them a gun. And I think part of it may be down 129, something 123 or 44. But in saying that, that doesn't mean they're going to follow those signs. So, if we could get a disproportionate number of trucks along that road, cause damage to it. And Mr. Bob, I don't know if you would entertain a motion to restrict that to no more than two actuals for through trucks?
Well, that's what we've been talking about, that need. That would be better, in my place, than putting weight on it, unless you go, you don't have any scales.
That's right. We'd have to have scales in order to enforce it. And...
No, let's see, let me, I gotta get, I understand, was it two seventy-eights they're closing or forty-threes?
Forty-three.
It's forty-three.
It's forty-three. A lot of those roads have one, one in the same.
Yeah, right around Pippa.
Yes, it's US Highway.
Or kind of lake.
Well, this is.
US Highway forty-three.
US forty-three, okay.
Yes, yes.
But, you're estimating that be the better way to limit.
I think so, I think so. You know, you're gonna have delivery trucks, you know, that we would allow to do that one time delivery along that route. But, you know, that road's not designed to accommodate that type of traffic volumes. And we really don't know what kind of trucks are gonna be coming down through there. So kind of being proactive, there will be a more beautiful route that they can go. But typically, a lot of times, people try to go the shortest route.
Well, to my understanding, they're even gonna, they're not even going back to forty-four, which is a state highway, a, a detour route.
Yeah, I'm not real sure. I tried to get up with Steve. They sent their traffic control to Montgomery to be approved. So I really don't wanna comment on exactly what routes they're gonna use, you know, there had been some discussion about that. And they have sent that information to Montgomery to get a final answer on it. So I can't tell you exactly what their detour route will be.
What, I mean, do they all, would that be, if it were your road, would that be the best way to keep the heavier traffic off of it, go to two axle, rather than the weight limit?
Oh, yeah. Because you, time you weigh on somebody's health, stuff you love, everybody do it, they'll be gone. And you just look out there.
Do you like to prove the regulations or did you something?
Yes, matter of fact, the county attorney has prepared a resolution and just in case y'all decide, y'all didn't want to adopt this, he's prepared a resolution for y'all to adopt. If y'all decide on restricting the use of that Canada forty-five.
Did you read that?
Yes, sir. It says where else the, let me get my glasses. Oh, here he is, right here.
Just waiting to see what else we have to say.
Yeah, yeah.
Our audience class is true.
Yeah, you're right, Kitty. Whereas the county commission of Marion County, Alabama, political subdivision of the state of Alabama, recognizes that motor vehicles of certain weight and size caused undue harm to certain county roads. And whereas the county commission of Marion County, Alabama, recognizes that Marion County Highway forty-five from United States Highway forty-three to United States Highway seventy-eight, Interstate twenty-two quarter X, all of them saying, a highway under jurisdiction of the county commission is a roadway that is expected to receive consistent traffic from motor vehicles of excessive weight and size due to temporary closure of US Highway forty-three in and near Pippa community. Whereas the county commission of Marion County, Alabama, recognizes a concern with the integrity of the roadway for Marion County Highway forty-five from United States Highway forty-three to United States Highway seventy-eight, Interstate twenty-two quarter X, if such traffic is allowed along this roadway. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county commission of Marion County, Alabama, that pursuant to Code of Alabama, section thirty-two, one-three, the county commission of Marion County, Alabama hereby prohibits the operation of all trucks with more than two axles, except for trucks that may be used for the purpose of moving or for making one-time delivery at any point along Marion County Highway forty-five from United States Highway forty-three to United States Highway seventy-eight, Interstate twenty-two quarter X. Be it further resolved that the county commission of Marion County, Alabama hereby adopts the penalty set forth in the Code of Alabama, section thirty-two, nine-five, for violation of this resolution. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the Code of Alabama, section thirty-two, nine-three, the county commission of Marion County, Alabama hereby authorize the Marion County sheriff and his deputies to enforce the provisions of this resolution. Done a regular session of the county commission of Marion County adopted and acquitted the sixteenth day of March, two thousand fifteen.
I'll make the motion.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
And let me say this, Mr. Bob.
That's just through traffic, no more.
That's right, that's right.
Through traffic.
If, if, if in fact, at a point when they reopen that, you can take issue, you can remove it if you so desire. You know, if at a point they reopen forty-three, you feel like you wanna do that or we can leave it and debate whichever.
Mike, I, I hate to say, but can you, there was apparently a meeting last week. I have no idea. I'm still catching up. Tracy's apparently making calls right now. Can you sort of enlighten what, catch me up in terms of what's going on?
They've had a section of highway where they're having a slide adjacent to the roadway. Where the, the, the embankment is sliding near the highway and is creating an unsafe condition. On forty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, near, near the Pippa community.
Okay.
And they've been monitored. They've been monitored actually around the clock. And, and they're trying to get everything in order to where they can make that repair. In order to make that repair, the information that I have received is they're gonna need to close that section of roadway for a period of time. You know, probably from three weeks to maybe a couple of months, you know. And, and they can tell you more about that because this is, this is probably weakhold information.
He was, he was informed about this last week.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting about it and we met and of course, the state is, is making everybody aware. We met down at DOC.
Alabama, Alabama meeting?
Yes, yes. And, you know, there's, there's, there's a large traffic volume on that road. You know, our county roads aren't designed to accommodate that type of traffic, not only from a structural standpoint, from, from a geometric standpoint, land widths and shoulder widths and things like that.
Forty-five.
Safety, yeah, from a safety standpoint. So, you know, we felt it was in the county's best interest that we, that we restrict it, restrict the use of it.
On forty-five.
Yeah. But that's kind of where we're at.
How soon, how soon is it gonna be doing that?
Well, they, they could possibly close it this week. I, I had Curtis.
Afraid of.
Curtis had talked to Steve Davis this morning. We kind of got an update. They're still evaluating all those factors that they need to consider. So if you're gonna print or anything, please talk to them to make sure.
Tracy's trying to call them back.
Just be sure that you get.
They never, they never call the media and let.
I do not represent.
That's why I get the media. And we have to keep, we have to keep, everybody put the media and then the public doesn't know until planned like that.
Yeah, we're, I think it was kind of a sudden thing and they, like I said, they've been monitoring it and making sure they keep everybody safe.
That was last week and it's too soon.
But anyway, that's, that's where we're at, John. So I guess, y'all, y'all, there's the resolution, y'all. I guess the next item of business, our annual conference is coming up, May the twelfth, thirteenth. I'd like to get approved, Lynn and myself, to attend that county's year's annual conference.
Make that motion.
Hold on a second.
And also I've got you, I've been requested by Dr. Egerton, Alabama Aeronautics, to go to Montgomery. I think I got, took into account, this Wednesday, next Wednesday, on a runway project, they're trying to cut a runway width down to seventy-five feet from a hundred to seventy-five. And I was supposed to meet with FAA and Dr. Egerton, two, this Wednesday, your next Wednesday. But I just want to get permission for y'all to make to attend that meeting.
They want to cut the width from a hundred?
From a hundred feet down to seventy-five feet.
Why would they want to do that?
It has to do with the design aircraft and the number of operations we have on different aircraft, you know, that's often warranted. The widths that are warranted for certain type of airplanes.
Oh, yeah, hold on a second.
Maggie, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Got anything on the fourth sample and what we're gonna do?
Well, you know, I, I have looked at our balances and, you know, we spent a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in each district last year. We gave fifteen thousand in each district for striping. You know, we, we paid three hundred and fifty thousand on County thirty-five on county land and then the state paid half of that. You know, in saying all that, it appears if we spend down really low, we can spend about seventy thousand dollars per district. Now, if sometimes y'all had taken that fifteen, that would include any fifteen that y'all pulled out of your force in account, you know.
That would include it?
Yeah, that would be included in that. That's gonna put us, that's gonna put us as low as we've ever been and.
What you gonna do to me? I'm gonna be forced to, you gonna have to lay all of that. I said first year I've laid three, five cost over a thousand dollars.
Yeah, you know, it is a problem. It, it's a significant problem.
I mean, it breaks me.
That's right. And I don't have the answer. I mean, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, we don't have enough money. We don't have enough money to do the things that we need to do. We don't have enough money.
No doubt. Well, I've been here.
What we're trying to do is, is at least prioritize what resources we do have and put them in areas we feel like are needed the most. Now, I, I don't have that. I mean, it is what it is. We've been, we got, if we do, of course, if you remember, we talked about Canada forty-two. That's a million and a half. We got, we have, we, in order to do that project, we're still gonna need to get an advancement of our federal money. And in the match on that project would be three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We just did Canada twenty. That was a million and a half dollar project. I mean, very large, these are large projects that require twenty percent match for the local government. And those are good investments because they're, they're major collectors and you get a lot of people. But, but that's kind of, you know, we've spent a lot of money.
Yeah, but it's killing us, killing us. You know, we thought to devote it, give fifteen thousand dollars a piece a year for four cent money to each district.
I know.
And I don't remember what I got by.
Well, last year we did a hundred and seventy thousand and we did fifteen thousand in striping last year. And, and, you know, we spent close to a million dollars, you know, on, on road maintenance. You know, truth of the matter is, we need, we need a lot more than that, absolutely. And I mean.
If I can't get paid to match up, put them in, I'm not fine.
Yeah, you know, next, you know, y'all ultimately, y'all.
When you break through us, where are you going?
Yeah, well, you know, I understand. I mean, you know, you, you gotta do what you gotta do, but, you know, that's, that's just, it is what it is. I mean, that's just the way the revenues are. We get about, what, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a month on, on our, on our two cent force in, our triple R, four and five and two. So, I mean, we're looking at seventy thousand dollars a district and that includes any fifteen that you wanna draw down and, you know, unless y'all wanna do something different.
You ought to be. Have your road the best anybody. Got left road. You gonna know if I'm asking you, ask your phone, or, heard it.
I stand.
I put that in every day. I can't get further than that. You're doing the same thing.
Nothing to argue with. I agree. I'm on your side. I agree.
That one there, Chris.
More revenue, more revenue, Kenny. There hasn't been an increase, you know, the gas tax, we haven't had an index. We, we get the same amount of gas tax we did today as we did twenty years ago.
I mean, when you get a call in the morning, like this morning, six thirty, had a call, old on the road, we died, you never want.
Well, take, take, take twenty-nine for example, you know, the engineering on twenty-nine, that's gonna be nineteen thousand dollars. And you say, well, don't spend it. Well, I, I think it's foolish not to spend it because we're gonna make sure that the dollars we do spend, we do it correctly.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm not arguing, I'm not pushing, but what you can, what you creating is breaking. One, two, and three, and four, five, everyone gets bossed.
And it's a national problem because others are not being, because the gas, the core fuel efficient cars are not, are not spending as much of the gas. So therefore, nationally, a lot of people are not, they get for.
The federal government and state governments made a big mistake years ago when they didn't index it. So, and, and, you know, so people, you know, it's just, the revenues haven't gone up any. And, and of course inflation, the cost of doing business has, you know, the reason. I can remember when, when you could get in place asphalt laid on the ground for twenty-two dollars a ton. And now it's about eighty dollars a ton. Revenues aren't that much.
I understand all that.
They took away revenue sharing, what, what, back in the, back in the eighties or nineties.
Seventies.
They took away, they took away, it was actually, it was actually in the eighties some too, because when I first started.
But that is.
They took away revenue sharing.
Before, before, they got revenue sharing.
We need to talk about the present.
And they, and they took it away out of this in the eighties. I was in county, county when they, when they took it away.
What are we gonna do? That's what I'm wanting to know. What are we gonna do?
You know, I guess we could talk to, to the, the governing body that makes decisions relative to, to funding us, you know, the legislature.
We need, we need some of them with our.
Public law too, I think.
Yeah, you know, the legislative delegation would be the people we need to talk to. They're the ones that determine what our revenues are.
They know venture movement, they call that away from us.
I don't know, you know.
Oh, you know, service coal tax, service tax.
You know, I don't, and that's, that's where, you know, probably where we need to be looking.
We need some.
I don't think.
We're gonna, we're gonna do it pretty quick.
They're gonna.
No, that's why I'm thinking you can ask her.
Scott, I've been around, you saw what you raised funds for.
Stop the unit system, go to the unit system to the district.
I don't want to be up to ACCA, definitely.
That's what they tell you, don't they? I've asked about it. Oh, you go to the unit system, to the district system. Well, I think everybody's going to one shot.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Well, you go away and have your people any horse.
What are you gonna do when you go broke, Bob? What are we gonna do? I mean, I wouldn't know myself. I wouldn't sit here and go broke. It's time to do something. There, what we gotta do.
I don't know. Radio district, give me more.
I mean, it'd help to get it all by equal, wouldn't it? I mean, you know, look at it, it's tough. I've got three more covers put in and all of them over five dollars a feet. And I got two out of those, I've got a bottom, I've got a big four digger. That was for the man right before he left. I had done and rotted out.
I feel your pain, I really do. I mean, it's, it's tough, it's tough. There's a lot of things that we need to do, that we, you know, that we wanna do.
We need to be leading that way and trying to do something. I mean, before it gets too late, we ain't got nothing. One through, I reckon.
Yes, sir.
I mean.
Did you ever look into that logging thing?
Yeah, we, we just got, I both looked at it.
What, we just need to adopt the thing the ACCA's got? The same, we know what you're saying, the same law, or the same whatever?
I don't think one makes it. I think we'll have to adopt theirs.
Can this adopt theirs?
Yeah, I don't believe you can make a law change. I don't think that's possible. Where the roads?
Well, since they, back several years ago, the logging committee got their state senator to raise the.
Well, you know who done it. You know, none of these are going to name, I don't care.
You got the, the weight limits on our county roads raising the same thing as the state highway. You haul one with our county roads, you can't, the quarter X down here. You grow a three axle truck, triaxle on our country, you can't run on interstate. You, you all made logs on Canada forty-five, you can't on, uh, safety highway.
That's right. Actually, you can haul them over.
Who was getting, baby?
Do I?
Who was getting with, ever?
I don't know.
I don't.
Yeah.
That's what's up, I kind of guess.
Buddy, 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 buddy.
When, when you think of motion to adopt that?
Mike, on the. Look, Scott, I, I've actually got a sample model ordinance. I don't, Scott hadn't looked at it. I mean, he probably wanna review it.
Is it ACCA?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ACCA one is, is fine. We, we might could even, it adds a few things in there that, it's not against the law. It just adds a little bit more into, into the law. We can narrow, narrow it down a little bit more, but ACCA law is fine. Their model ordinance is good.
No, all it does is, is require the logging company or the contractors or the landowners or somebody to, to contact the agency office.
The law, yeah, law requires the timber owner to give notice that is gonna use our county roads. If it's, if they're using an existing access point like a, a drive or something, it's two days. If they're gonna be making a new, new drive, drive onto a county road, it'll be four days notice. And it authorizes us to be able to penalize them if they fail to do so. And if you can get an injunction from them using, from harvesting the timber until they give us that notice. We can't require a bond or security until they have three violations in a two-year period. But basically what it does is it lets us know when somebody's gonna be using the, the road. So that maybe, you know, there might be work that we might need to do on a county road to make it.
Take the payment off of it?
Yeah, at least, at least gives us notice of who's using the road and that's an important thing. It doesn't change any, even without this, anyone using the roads inappropriately would, you know, still be subject to civil action by the county commission. But this will let us know who, who that is using the roads.
Yeah, they'll provide us with a detailed map showing the access, proposed access point and they'd actually show us their haul route. You know, they, we'd have to get that approved in. Yeah, that, that provide us with a detailed map showing the access, proposed access point, and they'd actually show us their haul route, you know, they, we'd have to get that approved in advance as well. And of course, you'd have to appoint a licensed inspector, I guess, to go out and, and, and oversee it, or you're just gonna put that.
Hands you better, that, yeah.
We'd have the personnel, we'd have personnel without hiring somebody to do that.
Well, you know, it, it's really hard to foresee exactly what it's gonna, what it's gonna get into, I know we, we have a lot of riding operations, and certainly it's gonna be a, a significant amount of work to, to keep up with.
If you can't make money, you might as well keep your mouth shut. If you can't put money in front, you might as well not do it, in my opinion.
You can't do it till after two violations, and, until you're here, the three violations.
Three violations in twenty-four months period, I'm sorry.
Blake, and, and, and whether you.
Haven't get all that done, we'll get to all of these soon.
Well, I mean, if you can go out there and stop and forward the territory, or tell them what's going on, I don't know. I didn't, I don't know, I said, that, you know, I mean, the motion for that, anybody make the motion to adopt that law? Or the ACCA? Nobody wants to make a motion?
See words, I don't see words no way I'm on this level.
Well, I, the only thing I can tell you, you'll know where the, who's logging. If you ain't out there holding your hand, there'd be two loggers on one road, who are you gonna blame?
That's right, too.
They're gonna be responsible for what damages they do.
I don't see where it hang, but I'll make the motion.
You can just sue them, if you know.
I'll make the motion if it helps, but I don't, you know, it's.
I, I only thing, I, I think it'll help me. You know, just when they all, we weren't hogging roads logging, you don't go over there every day, thirty-five miles, one way to get over there, I don't know, or maybe six to my logging. And then you can be going a week.
I can't see where the loggers doing any more damage to my road than, uh, the trucking company in general.
You can't, and you didn't see that down there, when they come out of your district, get my district, and stroke blood down the road for a mile, that's all right, don't involve it. They come, they stay, they stay on his road for a half, no, no, what do you mean?
Well, it's one thing, but tearing up the road is everything.
But, what's the problem with that? When they start starting the front end, so, like, it was something wrong with your, with the ten? Pilling things off.
Most of your loggers around here are responsible.
They are.
We, we, we've got a few that come from, that come from out of, out of county that give us some problems, and probably get some of the others unfairly bad. Yeah, I have stayed, most, most of the guys that we've dealt with have been responsible.
Oh, they're good, they're good people, I like to see anybody work.
That's right, that's right, now, we've had some, I'm gonna tell you, we've had some problems. But it's, it's, most of the time, it's been people either out of state or out of county.
Exactly, right.
So, you know.
You go, you'd be surprised how many people in your county are, are, uh, how many jobs are in logging in Marion County.
Yeah, but, you know, I can see that.
I mean, you don't go wrong, all the timbers are.
Yeah, I like to see good work, but I don't like getting them calls where the roads are all the same, and I ain't.
You, you have problems with that.
It's just a danger of being muddy, it's nice nails there, but, being slick and cold.
Do you need a motion, do you want to say? You say it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Me?
I'm for it.
Is any against?
Well, Doc, same roof regulations, ACCA.
I know, but Bob, did you vote?
I don't, she's not going.
Abstain?
Abstain.
And all, all, those four wrote, wrote.
No, Randy didn't say that.
I abstained.
And it stinks, so that's, and, uh, Mike, you're voting?
I'm voting for it.
So that would be three, zero, with two abstentions.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't think it'll help, I would like to handle that anyway, but we will have something in place, I guess. Before, and how, for the life of God.
I prepared, yeah, Scott prepared the, the ordinance and the documents that we need to, to, for y'all to, to sign. And, um, we'll, 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 we'll need to provide notice to them that we would adopt.
You go out there, you go out there and talk to them. Then you get the mud off the road, then you go get them. State trooper's over there by my, by my house, and do it to State Highway two thirty-three every day. Boy, for big, like, just bothered once, you, old youth, went, got a big track tens around, two or four hundred acres. Pulled all the mud out in the road, and you don't have to shovel it off. This is our logging yesterday. Right in front of church, mud that deep I told the road, they probably had to shovel again today, but still ain't getting the mud off, it's a little hot, wrecked there. You know, a little bit of trucks come down two thirty-three, beat off today probably, you know, but there more people in the church out there.
Yeah, like I say, you can have some good loggers, we got some local good loggers in the city, you know, and it's, but, we got some, many people come in here, you know, logging, it don't want to help.
Yeah, they're okay.
They make the bed when you tell them so.
Yeah.
Good ones sometimes have to pay for the bad ones.
I was, my, my, I thought they were taking, I just walked in, I said, who's the boss, and he did. Find out who's over there, so I talked to him, he, he here, you know, come find out, I was talking to him, you know. I turned over, yeah, man, start talking to him, he's, well, I'm going out with the boss and stuff, you know, he just said, start with it.
One other thing, y'all get a minute. Uh, you know, I got that, and we talked about that proposal for that slide on twenty-nine. You know, we talked about that forty-two, and they said while they were here, if y'all wanted to do it, it would be an additional thirty-seven hundred dollars. So I just thought I would throw that up, and that's, you know, that's up to you.
Would that be?
It's on forty-two, I don't know if you've been, we've had some paid in slides right there, and, um, they just included that in their proposal. And they said if we, if they did it while they were doing the other, that would be thirty-seven hundred dollars, so I'll entertain if y'all want to pursue that.
Yeah, that's any drum.
And I'll make the motion, we do it while we're, while we're here.
All in favor? What do you do, Mike, what do you do?
They, they'll drill down and evaluate the soil and, and what's, potentially what's causing the slide, and then, you know, offer what we need to do to correct it.
Which company is that?
It's TerraCon, it's a geotechnical engineering firm. They specialize in, in that.
Where they at?
You know, I don't, I don't, where's their home address, it's probably Birmingham, but I don't.
Okay.
I'd look it up, go from there.
Burm, Birmingham.
Birmingham. Mike, yeah?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
We ain't know this time here, we got a vote on advance or not, you going to school? Kingfish over there, they're supposed to have those two.
Mike, we don't, the county, I'm gonna do adjourn, let me ask you a question. County doesn't have a written policy on, uh, road, uh, work, there's no ice and snow as far as, uh, not blading roads, I mean, that's common sense, so.
I, I'm not aware of any policies that regulate, not with weather, we can't weather activity.
That you have to.
Well, no, but I mean, and Willie just didn't, a lot of people wonder why you don't blade snow off county roads, but I didn't figure there was a, I mean, if you blade snow off county roads, you wouldn't have any county roads.
It's hard, it's hard to play, it's hard to play.
You know, you can't play.
You need to be on a level smooth surface.
It's even hard to do for roads on tips, so.
It is, it is, it's just, they're, they're uneven, and you end up hitting high in most spots.
A lot of your places worth coming up, you know, harder down there for the road neat, clean.
They, they cut the shoulders, it's a very good, very good thing, drainage is probably the single most important thing as far as preserving the, the integrity of the roadway.
Our roads, I know we got a pothole, but we've got some good roads too.
Yeah, you know, I agree, you know, some of our.
Major roads, they can get bad, Bob, forty-one. Forty-one, they go across, Eric, my shop, never had a hole in, very comfortable there, it's a two big pothole, that goes to shallow dirt.
Well.
Forty-three highway.
I mean, that's.
I mean, it's a old road.
Well, that, for any time, great resurfacing quarter X, this has been built for here, I mean, road use is gonna get, of course, the more you use them, the better they are. With this asphalt. If you don't use the asphalt.
Way overweight, if you're not way overweight.
Well, that's true too, if you like airport, if you don't use airport, it'll crack, and, and come cracks in, before you use it, uh, better it is.
I reckon.
I would call Martin, calls from Saturday, they got big potholes out there, turn off the road, I like roads, I think it's, it ain't no difference, not a bunch of these.